Good evening, White Marsh. I'd like to call our Township Board of Supervisors meeting of August 11th, 2020 to order. Two, sorry, oh my goodness. August 11th, 2022 to order.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before we begin, I'd like to announce tonight a couple things. Patrice Tureen is joining us. She is here virtually through Zoom. And J.C. Toll is unfortunately not able to join us tonight. And we are changing the order of the agenda a little bit. We are moving up the gift agreement to happen after our public hearing. And then I would also like, as Supervisor Toll has been so involved with Chapter 55, to make a motion to table the ordinance amendment advertising Chapter 55 tree protection standards to a time when she is here, to table that.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. So we will hear that at another time. Brandon, announcements?
Yes, thank you, Laura. Road updates are being provided on a weekly basis in the township's e-newsletter and are posted on the township webpage. You can sign up for the weekly newsletters at www-whitemarshtpw.org. Bring the family to Miles Park on August 17th at dusk for a viewing of Ghostbusters Afterlife. As always, please bring your own blanket or chairs. And finally, join the Baron Hill Fire Company on August 23rd and 25th at Miles Park for sprinklers in the park. The events will be held from 7:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m. on August 23rd and from 6:00 p.m. to 7:30 p.m. on August 25th. Thank you.
Thank you. Very excited, we have a great presence with us here tonight, that we have some new officers to introduce. Chief, would you like to?
Sure. Thank you. Thank you, board members, and I apologize to everyone with the setup and the cameras. I don't mean to have my back to you, but we'll give it a roll. So, at the beginning of January, the White Marsh Township Police Department started the process of hiring probationary police officer to join the ranks of our agency. At that time, there was one vacancy on our staffing and we intended to hire one officer to replace an officer that had retired after 25 years of service to the township. By the time we reached the end of the hiring process in mid-June, another officer had resigned from the department and we were in a position to hire two probationary police officers. The application period of almost two months closed with us receiving 103 applications for the probationary police officer position. The application resume review process then occurred and the top 40 candidates were invited to join us at the physical agility testing on April 30th at the Plymouth-White Marsh High School. The physical agility testing is based on the minimum requirements needed to enter the police academy in Pennsylvania based on the Midstool Police Officers Education and Training Commission guidelines. The candidates that successfully passed the physical agility testing were then invited to the oral interview portion of the police hiring process. These interviews were conducted by supervisory level officers from our agency and a visiting supervisory level officer from the Abington Township Police Department. From here, the top candidates were identified and our detective division, with the assistance of administrative officers and specially assigned officers, conducted the background investigation. The background investigation includes a polygraph exam, a verification of all information provided, and interviews with references, previous and current employers, neighbors, past neighbors, friends, and family. By mid-June, we were finishing up our hiring process and we had identified two candidates that were clearly the top two available candidates for the position of probationary police officer with the White Marsh Township Police Department. Both men also happened to be Philadelphia police officers. Conditional job offers were extended to both men. After they had completed their pre-employment physical and psychological exams, formal job offers were extended to these candidates. On July 11th, 2022, seven months after we had started, both officers started their employment with White Marsh Township. On July 12th, 2022, Magisterial District Justice Deborah Lukin swore both men in in her courtroom. At this time, I'm pleased to introduce both of these officers to the Board of Supervisors and the residents of White Marsh Township. First, I'd like to recognize Brandon C. Irwin. Brandon was raised in the Roxborough section of Philadelphia and currently resides in the Lafayette Hills section of White Marsh Township with his wife Brooke and their three-month-old daughter, Sophia. Both Brooke and Sophia are here with us this evening. Brandon is the son of Linda and the late Barry Irwin. Linda is here with us this evening also. Brandon's sister Ashley was unable to join us tonight. She is also a resident of White Marsh Township. Brandon is also joined here tonight by his in-laws, who are White Marsh Township residents, Kevin and Jackie Aschenfelder, along with his brother-in-law, Kevin and Matthew Aschenfelder. Brandon is a 2011 graduate of Roman Catholic High School and a 2016 graduate of Newman University with a bachelor's degree in criminal justice. Brandon graduated from the Philadelphia Police Department Academy in 2017 and was assigned to the 25th Police District. Brandon is assigned into our field training program under the supervision of Officer John Hartman. Please allow me to introduce Officer Brandon C. Irwin, badge number 90, to the Board of Supervisors and the residents of White Marsh Township. Officer Colin M. Yaber. Colin was raised in the Northeast section of Philadelphia and currently resides in the Northeast section of Philadelphia with his wife Harley, who is also here with us this evening. Colin is the son of Timothy and Mary Yaber. Colin's parents are here with us this evening, along with his mother-in-law Janet Dumphy. Colin's older brothers, Matthew and Thomas Yaber, along with his brother-in-law Jason and his wife Alyssa Dowd, are with us this evening. Jason is the chief of the Tri-Hampton Rescue Squad in Bucks County. Not to be forgotten, Colin's uncle, Captain Thomas McLean, of the Philadelphia Police Department Counterterrorism Unit, is here with us this evening. Captain? Colin is a 2013 graduate of Archbishop Ryan High School and a 2018 graduate of Westchester University with a bachelor's degree in professional studies. While attending Westchester University, Colin participated in the ROTC program, completing basic training with the United States Army in Fort Benning, Georgia. Upon graduation from Westchester, Colin enlisted in the Pennsylvania Army National Guard and was assigned to A Troop 1, 104th Cavalry Regiment located in Philadelphia. In June of 2021, Colin was activated from reserve status and deployed for 11 months to Egypt, returning just in time to participate in the hiring process. Colin currently holds the rank of First Lieutenant with the position of Battle Captain in the reserves. I had to put that in battle, captain. Colin graduated from the Philadelphia Police Academy in 2019 and was assigned to the 22nd Police District. Colin is assigned to our field training program under the supervision of Officer Caleb McMaine. Please allow me to introduce Officer Colin M. Yaber, badge number 91, to the Board and residents of White Marsh Township.
Can we have you and your families come up, please, for pictures? That's just what we do.
Yabers, let's get the Yabers first, then we'll get...
Chief, you want to jump in? The board?
Sure.
Oh, oh, oh. I guess you're dismissed.
Except the Archbishop Ryan guy.
I was going to say the Roman guy. Thank you, be safe. But now it's not as... I just want to make another announcement as the room is kind of shifting and we have some people leaving. For those that have just joined, we did make a motion to table Chapter 55 tonight, so anybody who is here to hear that, we are not discussing Chapter 55. And we did change the order of the agenda and move the gift agreement up to happen after our public hearing. Give it one more moment for things to quiet a little bit. Great, thank you. Do I have a motion to open the public hearing for conditional use 03-22 for the Cafe du Cour?
You got it, Decore.
Decore? Care of Carrie Kelman, 535 Germantown Pike, for a restaurant, tea room, or cafe in the VC1 Village Commercial District?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.
Thank you very much, Chair Nester. My name is Sean Kilkeny, I'm a township solicitor. What I wanted to do is briefly explain to the public the conditional use process, then enter into some exhibits, see if Mr. Guttenplan had any comments, and then I see the applicant's attorney here real quickly. Then the board can either continue this conditional use on the record to another evening if they're not satisfied with what they have heard and want more information, or they can close the public hearing and take action on a potential motion, which is already listed on the agenda. So, first of all, conditional use is akin to a zoning hearing and special exception in a zoning hearing where there's criteria or ordinance and yet the applicant has to satisfy them. So I have to ask this question, is anyone requesting party status? And what I mean by party status is that you can always comment at the end of this hearing. Anybody in the public has the right to absolutely comment. The party status is the process whereby someone takes an active role, calls witnesses and/or cross-examines witnesses that the applicant may call. Is anybody here requesting party status? If they are, please raise your hand. Okay, seeing none, I'm going to go ahead and mark some exhibits. T1 will be an application with floor plan, street view, and aerial photograph. T2 will be the proof of provocation in the Times Herald, July 22nd, 2022, and July 29th, 2022. T3 will be the lease agreement. T4 will be the property owner authorization letter dated June 29th, 2022. T5 will be applicant meeting notification letter dated June 14th, 2022. T6 will be the resident meeting notification letter dated June 23rd, 2022. T7 will be the zoning ordinance compliance review dated June 15th, 2022. T8 will be the posting of the property dated August 3rd, 2022. And T9 will be the White Marsh Township Planning Commission recommendation, the meeting minutes on July 26th, and clarifying that there was a motion recommending approval of this application. Now I'd like to turn it off to our zoning officer in case he had initial comments before the presentation.
Thank you. Just a couple of comments. This is a conditional use permitted in the VC1 district in which the shopping center across the street is located. This is a conditional use for a restaurant, tea room, or cafe under Section 116-290B, subsection 10. And as indicated by T9, this was before the Planning Commission on June 26th of this year, and after a very brief discussion, the Planning Commission made a unanimous recommendation recommending approval of this conditional use. With that, I will turn it over to Mr. Tucker to take over for the applicant.
Thank you, Charlie. My name is Bob Tucker. I'm the attorney representing the applicant. My clients have entered into a lease agreement for the 1,300 square foot space across the street that's recently occupied by the Salon Le Blonde. And as Charlie mentioned, we're seeking conditional approval to open a coffee shop, which is permitted as a conditional use in the Village Commercial zoning district. Given the simplicity of this application, I think it might make sense if I just go through kind of the basis for our approval and then call a witness up here to confirm my summary if that's acceptable.
Sure.
Great. So as you know, the property itself, it's a multi-tenant retail facility with a mix of uses, including a couple restaurants. The properties have a shared parking arrangement, and we're confident that this coffee shop use will not experience or create any more challenges for parking or traffic. Again, as Charlie said, the Planning Commission has recommended approval of this application. I have with me pre-marked exhibit packets for everyone, but they're no different than what the township introduced, so I'm going to rely on those. I've marked it so we can be consistent in case I refer to them, but he covered everything that I wanted to introduce. So for conditional use in this township, the zoning ordinance requires that we comply with general requirements set forth in Section 11637F. And I'm just going to run down those requirements and why we meet them. First, the conditional use must be authorized by the zoning ordinance. Like I said, Section 116290B10 permits a restaurant, tea room, cafe, or similar establishment by conditional use. The proposed use will be compatible with the character of the neighborhood and the use of the property to adjacent property owners. Again, it's similar, it's a mixed-use building with multiple restaurants. Again, no impact to traffic. We're not expanding a building or creating it, we're simply changing the use from a salon to a coffee shop. The use is consistent with the township's comprehensive plan, as it's a mixed-use retail center today. The use won't create any objectionable noise, lighting, or have any other detrimental visual impacts on adjacent properties. We comply with the applicable zoning district, and the use will not unduly burden sanitary sewers, school, police, fire, park, stormwater, or other public facilities. Conditional uses in the VC district are also subject to, excuse me, the general requirements of Section 116292, but generally speaking, these provisions don't apply. Deals with buffers and landscaping and density of townhomes and apartments, it's not applicable to this use. So from an ordinance perspective, I think we clearly demonstrate conditional use is appropriate for the space in the VC district. So at this point, I'd like to call up my witness, Carrie Kelman, to...
If you could raise your hand for me? See, Sol, through the testimony, we'll give this matter, we need the whole truth and not be much too protective of that.
Yes, I do.
C-A-R-E-Y-K-E-L-M-A-N.
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Please state your name for the record.
Sure, it's Carrie Kelman.
And just can you just generally quickly explain what you have envisioned for this property?
Certainly. First of all, thank you for your time tonight. My partner Alexis Bentley and I would like to open a coffee shop, obviously across the street. It's called Cafe Decore, which roughly translates to coffee from the heart. We'd like to offer coffee, tea, pastries. We won't be doing any cooking in the building, perhaps some heating up of food. And we want to serve the community with a great cup of coffee, or tea, or smoothie, or whatever it is. And we also want to create the kind of environment where you can come and stay. It's not going to be a rush-you-out-of-there kind of situation.
And thank you, Charlie pulled up the floor plan, which is part of what has been marked as exhibit T1. Is that accurate?
Yes, it's a 35-seat, approximately 35-seat cafe, yes.
And you were present here for my opening statement tonight?
Yes, I was.
If you were asked to testify directly, would your answers be consistent with the information I provided for?
Yes.
Would you adopt this testimony as your own?
Yes, I would.
I have no further questions unless the board has any questions.
Well, this is exciting. So, tell me more about the coffee and, you know, like, is it Wi-Fi? Can I come bring my laptop kind of place?
Absolutely, and we're going to encourage that. I know several coffee shops around. It's kind of a money-making situation where they're bringing people in, making limits on time, and we want to encourage a neighborhood place that will be Wi-Fi. We're actually going to have a room in the back. It's existing rooms that are there, we're just going to configure it a little different. So if you have a business meeting or need to make a Zoom call, you'll be able to do that in private. And we also want to include teens, maybe a place to go right after school and do some homework and get a drink. Our plans are to work with, we have three potential coffee manufacturers. We want to work with someone relatively close to the area. We also want to focus on women-owned businesses, providing, you know, our pastries, our things that we sell. And we truly want to make it a community coffee shop.
Excellent. For the traffic in and out, not vehicular, but compared to the salon that was there, do you expect it to be about equal with people coming and going, or you're hoping for more? I mean, 35 capacity?
I mean, I would estimate honestly that it would probably be more than what would be going into a salon. The way we've organized it, at the back would be the registers, there'll be plenty of room to, you know, not have people all out front or blocking up the sidewalk or anything like that. There's a traffic flow in and out, so... But I do believe that it would be more than a salon. I think they probably had like six chairs or so, so I think it would be more.
Okay. And the turnaround time, when are you going to be open?
So, as you know, we have to work with the Montgomery County Health Department and the state to get my food certification. So depending upon that and contracting, hopefully by October 15th.
Awesome.
What are your hours?
We're estimating 7:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. every day of the week.
Wouldn't go 6:00 a.m.?
It's possible, it's possible. For you, right?
Listen, it's not a deal-breaker.
She'll be in at 6:00, I'll be in at 7:00.
Lake Always.
Negotiation.
6:30. Very good. Good luck with this. It's a big risk to do this type of thing, and I admire that. And Lafayette Hills needs a coffee shop.
We agree.
So, thank you for taking this risk, and I wish you the best of luck with it.
Thank you so much, how kind.
I told you how I'm going to go with it.
Thanks so much.
Any questions? Patrice? There we go. Okay, any public comments? I don't see any on the virtual side. Do I have a motion to close this public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. And I think we are ready to move this to a motion. Do I have a motion to approve the conditional use 03-22 Cafe Decore?
You got it.
Care of Carrie Kelman, 535 Germantown Pike, for a restaurant, tea room, or cafe in the VC1 Village Commercial District?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you so much.
Yay, congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Okay, like I said earlier, we are moving the agenda around a little bit, so after this public hearing, we are moving up the gift agreement. I appreciate your patience with this. I'm going to make the motion and then I think we have some comments here. Do I have a motion to approve the grant agreement with the Carabots Foundation to provide a grant in the amount of $2 million to the Art Center for the acquisition of the Corson Abolition Hall property, which includes several acres of open space and meadow, and also the following buildings, the historic building located at 1 East Germantown Pike, known as the Hovden House, the building located at 4006 Butler Pike, the main house, the historic building located just to the southeast of the main house, Abolition Hall, and the residential house located at 14 Maple Lane, and recognize and acknowledge the wonderful generosity and gratitude of Nicholas and Athena Carabots, the Carabots family, the Carabots Foundation, in helping preserve this property and its national history for White Marsh Township.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Mueller.
Thank you, Chair Nester. This is actually very exciting that it's been a little bit of a long time coming since we announced the agreement of sale and kind of had to keep quiet because of a lot of different reasons who the donor was going to be. And tonight's the night where we get to recognize and really appreciate the Carabots family and the Carabots Foundation for their grant of $2 million to the Art Center, who will be occupying the property once we come to settlement and they're able to move in. They would be moving into, as part of this agreement, into the Hovden House, which has a rich art history, as many of you know, so really has great symmetry there. The total cost of the purchase was 3.95 million, and we had an appraisal and due to the laws of Pennsylvania, we couldn't go over the appraised value. And with this generous grant that is going to the Art Center, we're able to make up the difference for the entire purchase price to the Art Center. We do have, moving forward, there are some things that have to continue to occur. There'll be agreements between the township and the Art Center with regards to the property. There will be recognition to the Carabots at the property, but in no way will detract from the historic preservation of Abolition Hall. It also does allow for the Carabots family to utilize the main house if they are displaying any of their heirlooms and so on, and a lot of those decisions will be made as we move forward. It's just very important and... It's, it's just very important, and, and really, it's great that we're able to preserve all of these historic buildings and the entire property. There's a huge amount of open space meadow that really make up the history of the property as, as a whole. So it's, it's really exciting that we're able to actually let the public know who that donor is. As part of this, there, there will certainly be ribbon cutting at some point in the fall where we hope to have the Carabots family present and honor them in person, which will, will be wonderful. But that is really, you mentioned that the properties that are involved there, that is really what this is about tonight, is the grant that goes to the Art Center from the Carabots Foundation in the amount of $2 million.
Thank you, Rick. Do you have any comments? Do you have any comments? Okay. JC has a few comments that I'll share. She wanted to say that she's so excited to move forward with this Board of Supervisor vote on the next step towards the acquisition of this historic property and, and important property, and grateful to the Carabots family for their generous donation to the White Marsh Art Center. This truly is extraordinary. I did take a moment with a little help to come up with a, just a few words to say. Abolition Hall is a living example of the journey of history. This property's journey from the 18th century farm to a meeting location for the abolitionist movement helped change and shape our nation's history. We are reminded of the many courageous journeys of individuals from the American South to this vital station on the Underground Railroad, escaping the bondage of slavery. Here, the Corson family and other abolitionists, at great risk to themselves, provided compassion and safety to enslaved people and helped them continue their journey to freedom. Tonight, the journey of Abolition Hall continues through the tremendous generosity of Nicholas and Athena Carabots, their family, their family representative, Bob Downs, the Carabots Foundation. The history and legacy of every person who provided or found safety within the walls of this historic property is now preserved for all time because of the kindness and commitment the Carabots family and foundation have shown to this township. No matter what we say here tonight or in the future, it will be insufficient to fully express the heartfelt gratitude we have for their truly remarkable grift. Thanks to them, this journey continues. Thank you. And so with that, I put this to a vote. All those in favor?
I believe you have that's public.
Oh, public comment, yes. Please, come on up.
Thank you. Sedell Zo of Arts Ridge Road. This is a wonderful occasion, second only to the announcement that the township and the Art Center had entered into the agreement of sale a while back. I have read the grant agreement. There are a couple of comments I'd like to make. First, I am quite pleased that the meadows, the eight acres roughly, will remain as open space and, as the agreement says, will not be used for sports fields. That is a relief. And secondly, I am delighted that, that, as the agreement says, the partnership, meaning the township and the Art Center, has committed to soliciting input from the public to determine the future use and operation of Abolition Hall. The public deserves a say in the use of this property, particularly given that there's almost $2 million of public funds going into this acquisition. I do have a question, however, two questions. On page five, at the top of the agreement, the end of the paragraph that begins on the previous page, it notes that, that the naming recognition will be in perpetuity, and I'm wondering whether that precludes the possibility that there could be additional gifts from private donors who also would like to have some name recognition? Because as we know, the acquisition cost is a mere drop in the bucket compared to the cost that will be required to renovate all of the three historic buildings. And I understand that, given that the open space funds will be used for the acquisition, that the maintenance can also come from the open space fund, but I suspect that the township would not, and the township and the Art Center would not want to foreclose the possibility of private gifts, additional private gifts. So does this statement preclude other gifts that require naming rights?
No.
No.
There's no exclusivity. We could always amend an agreement to address that in the future.
Yeah, and I think this agreement also states that any kind of changes have to go to the Carabots Foundation as well. So, but it doesn't preclude other donations, private donations.
Good, glad to hear that. And then a second question with regard to paragraph 4.4 on page seven, reasonable sole discretion of the foundation. I read this paragraph several times and tried to distinguish between the rights of the foundation with regard to certain consent and, and then, and then the rights that are not included. So for example, "Foundation shall have the sole and absolute discretion to determine the acceptability," and so on, "with regard to design, designs, depictions, and selections." And then it goes on in the next sentence to say that, that, that the design is not subject to such approval, and I was a little confused.
What's the question?
Does the Carabots Foundation have the right, under the terms of this agreement, to establish the parameters and limits and nature of any design changes that are made to the buildings?
They will have a say. They, in this, you will see that any kind of changes, they are to be notified of them. So if they chose to make a comment or have a say in it, they would have a say, like, like the board would have a say in it. But we have to specifically notify them of any of those changes.
Okay, so it's a matter of notification primarily?
Right. And they would have a say as much as anybody else would have a say in it.
Okay. And then, although this isn't in the agreement, Rick, I believe you said that the Carabots family has some historical artifacts that they would like to display. Is that the boxing memorabilia?
These were just ideas.
Okay.
You know, and, and in the main house, that's an area where they could do that.
Right.
What that is and what that looks like, we're a long ways from making those decisions.
I know at one point, Mr. Carabots had suggested with regard to the land on Butler Pike, that he wanted to build a museum for his boxing artifacts, so that's why it occurred to me that perhaps this is where they might end up.
I think, I think the Carabots family is doing this, you know, one of the missions of the Carabots Foundation is serving under privileged youth, and, and that is something that was certainly important to them in their decision to provide this grant to the Art Center.
Okay. Well, as I said, this is a wonderful development, and I look forward to participating as a resident of this township in the discussions about the use of, of the land and the buildings. Thank you to everyone, and I wish that Nick Carabots were still alive so that I could thank him directly. Thank you.
Do we have any other public comments? Seeing none, then I put this to a vote. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Motion carries. Thank you, and good luck. Thank you for your patience with that. So then we do have, next on our agenda, a public discussion item. It's the review of the subdivision land development 1421 KRE Acquisition Corporation of 4041, 401 and 433 Washington Street. This is a conditional final plan of 398 apartments located in both Conshohocken Borough and White Marsh Township.
Good evening, I'm Ed Murphy. I'm here on behalf of KRE, together with Jordan Minow, one of the entitlement directors of KRE. You've seen us for almost a year now in multiple different applications, all related to this particular project we started last fall, when we made everyone aware of our interest in it, and we've been to your zoning area board, we've been to your planning commission, we were in front of this body back in April, and as the screen indicates real fast, the project is a little less than 11 acres, of which a little less than three acres is located in White Marsh. As you indicated, the total size of the project is 598, but only 60 of those units are in White Marsh. While there is a disproportionate number of units in Conshohocken, there's also a disproportionate amount of the Riverfront Park in White Marsh. So we've run through a number of different architectural designs with your boards and commissions. We've addressed all those issues which were conditions of, excuse me, the preliminary approval which we received back in April. You can see on the screen, the park, which we went through extensively, your planning commission is quite heavily developed with landscape and trails, et cetera. And we're at a point this evening that we met with your planning commission most recently at the end of July. We received the favorable recommendation tonight. We're here for what we hope is the final plan approval. Charlie and Sean's office have braced us with a draft of the approval resolution with which we have no issue. It outlines the various fees that we're paying and authorizing more broadly the township to expend those fees, not just for the purposes that they were posted, but for any other township purpose. So I think we're in good shape. I think the staff agrees that we've addressed all the comments and concerns, and hopefully you agree, and we're ready to move forward.
Thank you. So we have any board comments? Any public comments? Seeing none. I'd like to move this to a resolution. Do I have a motion to adopt Resolution 2022-21 granting conditional final plan approval for the subdivision land development 14-21 KRE Acquisition Corporation 401 and 433 Washington Street for 598 apartments located both in Conshohocken Borough and White Marsh Township?
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Miller, please call the roll.
Mr. McCusker?
Yes.
Mr. Manuel?
Yes.
Ms. Tereen?
Yeah.
Chair Nester?
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks for your cooperation throughout.
Good luck.
Look forward to seeing that riverfront develop. What happened?
Okay, moving down to our motions, we are at a software proposal. Do I have a motion to approve the financial? God bless you.
Thank you.
Cloud-based software proposal with Edmunds GovTech in the amount of $38,450 for the first year.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Miller?
Thank you, Chair Nester. As was reported at our quarterly departmental meeting, the Finance Department, led by our Finance Director, Kevin Barron, has spent much of 2022 researching various financial software systems. The reason was Munis, our current system, under Tyler Technologies, we just wanted to see what other types of financial systems were available, looking at some of the, I guess, gaps that we had with our current system and how we could have everything be synced together. For instance, our escrow accounts are separate, bringing them into the financial software. It's really from a standpoint of creating more efficiencies with the software, as well as going out to the cloud. Then that reduces the need for having actual hardware and servers, and that's an additional cost that we can eliminate. And really, that's the way that things are going right now, is a lot of cloud-based type software. So Mr. Barron and the other members of the Finance Department went and actually demoed these other soft, various software systems. They went to other municipalities and talked about the pros and cons, and in the end, as mentioned in, in your motion, Edmunds GovTech was the one that they felt best met our needs, would create better efficiencies, and would be a software system we can use for the foreseeable future. It is quite an investment, we understand that, but the current system we've had for approximately 15 years, so we look at this as a long-term investment that we're making into this software package, and it'll, you know, all the departments would have access and be able to use it. So it's our recommendation that we move forward with signing a contract with Edmunds GovTech so that we can get them on board, and hopefully by the second quarter of 2023, somewhere around there, we should be, we should be live. It does take some time to integrate into ours, run them kind of parallel, and then transfer over. So it does take some time. We'd like to get it started sooner rather than later.
Is it something that takes a while to actually get?
I'll ask Mr. Barron to come up.
Good evening. I talked to Edmunds the other day after, was brought to the board last week, and they said about nine to 12 months, depending on the complication of the conversion. They've done some conversions from the Tyler system we have to their system, so they think it should be a lot easier. I had given them the spreadsheet of our escrows, and they said that should be easy to convert, and our fixed assets are on a spreadsheet too, that'll be put in the system. So they're saying nine to 12 months to, you know, obviously to give us, no, we don't think six months, but I think we'll be up and running definitely July of next year, if not sooner.
And how long does it take to actually get it bought and started?
If I get the approval, I will sign a document, or Rick can sign the document tonight. I will send that to them first thing tomorrow morning, and I'll probably start tomorrow afternoon.
All right.
Sending them information. So I'm looking forward to, so is my staff. Just, our system we're using is very cumbersome and not user-friendly, so.
Makes sense to get this, then. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other board comments, questions? Patrice? There we go. Okay. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Motion carries. Thank you. Good luck. Do I have a motion to authorize the advertisement of an ordinance amending the snow and ice code to include the announcement of snow emergencies?
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Miller?
Thank you, Chair Nester. Unfortunately, we can talk about, or fortunately, we could talk about snow, given how hot it is. It seems a little odd that we're talking about this, but as anything else in, living up in this area, the seasons change quickly, and before you know it, we'll be in that, in those seasons. So we're not changing anything as far as really the core of the snow and ice code. What we're doing, and this was a recommendation made by our Fire Marshal and Emergency Management Coordinator, was putting in a mechanism where we can declare a snow emergency that then alerts the public to what the snow code actually says, which is when we get over a certain amount of inches, then you're required to park in an even year on the even side of the street, in an odd year on the odd side of the street. So that really helps us for a couple reasons. One, it helps with snow removal, so that we're able to remove snow in a little more efficient manner. It alerts the public that we have these regulations and what the regulations are, because I would say most of the public didn't even know that exists. So we will have, you know, a PR campaign that goes out in advance to let folks know, as well as it also, it goes to the county. So if it ever is a severe storm, where there could be some state or federal money coming back, we've already taken the step to declare a snow emergency. That declaration would come from me or my designate. That would probably be the Emergency Management Coordinator, Nick Weaver, or Chief of Police, Chris Ward. So from that standpoint, we think that this is just adding that mechanism, and it also, we think will actually help educate the public a little bit more about how to park during a snow emergency.
Excellent, makes sense. Any board comments, questions?
Does that parking restriction apply on streets where you're currently only permitted to park on one side?
That would probably be lifted. We wouldn't ticket people for that. We would allow them to park there during those storms so that we can then get straight down, straight down the street.
That might need extra communication to make sure that's clear.
And all of that, we want to do some PR and do some PSAs on that. So I think that's a good. So I think that's a good point.
Any other comments? Public comments? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you. Do I have a motion to authorize the emergency repairs to stabilize River Road in the amount of $157,500?
So moved.
Second.
Krista, thank you.
Hello. Nearly a year ago today, as everybody may recall, we were hit by the remnants of tropical Storm Ida. We were lucky that we didn't sustain too much damage, but we did have an embankment failure along River Road. After the storm, we surveyed the road and found the lane nearest the embankment failure to be structurally unstable, and since that time, it's been closed with a one-way sign-controlled traffic restriction. We've been assured by FEMA that due to President Biden's declaration for emergency funding that we're eligible for that funding, but we've been in the bureaucratic process of attaining that. But since that time, the road has started to fail a bit more, and we're now at a state of urgency where we need to go ahead and do that repair. So we suspect we'll get the funding. We're asking tonight for authorization to award an emergency contract to a company called Axis in the amount of $157,500 to do an embankment restoration of that landslide, more or less, that occurred along River Road.
And would that be temporary? Like, would there be further?
It would be a permanent, forever fix.
But in the future, the DEP doesn't, it doesn't have to come back for renovation?
Right, right. And, and what the repair is, is because it's so steep there, it would be, they're called soil anchors, which are drilled into the underlying bedrock, and then there's a surface mat, more or less, that is pinned in. So it's contiguous with the bedrock in the end.
Definitely is needed. Any other board comments, questions? Seeing none?
Public comments?
Public comments? Thank you. Seeing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Motion carries. Thank you, Krista. Good luck. Do I have a motion to approve the capital improvement purchase for a new swap loader with the addition of a DEP grant in the amount of $510,772.75?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you, Chair Nestor. Just to go back to the previous motion, not, not that anything's going to change, but I just want to report something that Kevin reminded me of, is that we've already received three payments from FEMA for other Ida-related expenses that we incurred, so reimbursement. So we've been really successful. A lot of credit goes to our fire marshal, emergency management coordinator, Nick Weaver, certainly our township engineer and our finance director, really working with FEMA, because it's a lot of work, and, you know, we were able to recoup to this point. What would you say, Kevin? Give or take?
Drive that at 181129, probably 40 grand.
So that's.
Money we spent for River Road.
Yeah, the streetlight repairs, so on and so forth. So all, all this work that we did that was impacted due to tropical depression Ida, and we had to incur those costs, it's a lot of work, but that's money that's coming back to the township and in our coffers. So I just wanted to mention that, that.
That's great.
We're trying to do the same thing here with the River Road, but we've already been successful, and just wanted to give credit to those staff members. Moving on to, to this item is, this is some, some good news and some bad news. It seems like every month I'm coming to the board and saying, hey, costs are going up. But, you know, we all live our lives and realize that costs are going up, and there's no different, no difference here. The good news here is that we received a grant from DEP in the amount of $267,107, and that grant was applied for by Sean Halbaum and Jack Fields. They worked really hard with DEP to get that grant for this swap loader. And this was something that Jack brought up during the 2022 budget discussions, because it was a multipurpose-type vehicle. The leaf collectors that we have, it's a big machine that has a big arm, and it collects leaves, and then it collects dust the rest of the year. It really doesn't do anything. And that was always something that was starting to, I think, frustrate our public works director, because you're not getting all that out of it, but you do need it for the service that it provides to the residents. This new machine that he demoed at several other municipalities, public works have, have procured them, allows for a couple different things. It allows for only one person to do the leaf collection. So from a safety perspective, that's great. It's got a state body, it's got a lift gate, it's got a dump body, you can use it for more types of uses that the public works need. So it's, it's multi-use. The other items that are there are, that Jack was looking at, was some of the winter operations, that you could also use it as a salt spreader, plow, and salt briand sprayer. So multi-use vehicle, it is expensive. The cost was a little over $42,000 more for what we had originally projected. We worked with Kevin, there's funds available to do that. Jack also looked at the winter operation, that's a little over $59,000. We have monies in liquid fuels to be able to do that. We didn't want to lose out on the $267,000 grant. The other kind of bad news is, this is probably about two years out, in order for us to be able to get this piece of equipment to come in, because of everything that you hear in the news, supply chains and the like, and so on and so forth. So in looking at this, we know that it's, it's a lot, it's more money now. We might not see it for a couple of years, but this is really the way that Jack wants to go, and, you know, I keep using the same term, create more efficiency. Create more efficiency, yes, it's more money, but it's going to give us and serve a lot more purpose for the department than just the, the leaf machine that, you know, when I started in local government, they were like $20,000. Now they're over $100,000, and again, they're needed for our program, but once the program's over, they sit there for, you know, the better portion of, you know, seven months. This will be in use 12 months of the year. So just, Jack wanted to be here, he was on vacation, otherwise he would have been here to answer questions, but I think it's worthwhile, and, and I am recommending it after working with our township staff and coming up with the ability to have the funds, I think it is a worthwhile investment. And again, it would still take two years, and we only have to, you know, we still have $267,000 that's going to it. That's a significant amount of grant money that's defraying the overall cost.
So if we purchase this at this price now, is it guaranteed to stay this price now?
Yeah, that's, that's what we would be able to do. We'd be able to lock it in at this price, even if delivery isn't for, you know, two years. We're hoping that, that's what they're telling us, so everybody's shooting long. We're hoping we get it sooner, but that, that's the information we're being told at this point.
Great. I mean, it definitely sounds needed, and as costly as it is, it sounds much more efficient and safe, versatile.
Mm-hmm.
Any questions? Nope.
Sounds good.
Any public comments? Seeing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thanks. Please convey gratitude to Jack. Truly appreciate all that he does.
Will do.
As well as Kevin, and Krista, and the rest of our awesome team, and Charlie. I can't, I'm going to just keep going, but you guys do a great job. Okay, consider, let's see, we are on, to the lane that one. Do I have a motion to approve the stormwater operation and maintenance agreement with the Montgomery County for the cross-county Wissahican Trail along Stenton Avenue?
So moved. Second.
Mr. Miller?
Thank you, Chair Nestor. This is the cross-county trail that has been discussed for many years, that would go around the Sheep Track, go down Stenton Avenue, continue on Stenton Avenue, go down Wissahican, connect into the trails, excuse me, across from Mars Arboretum. The county is getting close to starting this project. You may recall, they had to do some floodproofing required by FEMA and the Army Corps of Engineers. They're doing that now, putting a flood wall around a property on West Valley Green. One of the steps that they need is they're going to have to put a bridge over the Wissahican Creek, a pedestrian bridge that's going to get over the creek. So there's some administrative items that they need to comply with as they're going through their grading permit with the township engineer, this being one of them, at the location on Stenton Avenue, a stormwater operation and maintenance agreement for this trail. So this has been reviewed by the solicitor's office, it's been reviewed by the township engineer, and we're recommending approval of the agreement.
Excellent. Slow and steady, we're getting there.
They're, they're, they're getting closer. We're going to start to see a little bit, I think, soon, some shovels in the ground at some point, or at least a ribbon cutting. Let's maybe start there.
Okay. And the pedestrian bridge won't go where the other replacement bridge is going to go?
No, this would, this would kind of be right on, right down from, in between West Valley Green and West Mill on Stenton. So that portion of the.
The other side, yeah.
Of the creek, it would, it would be going over that.
Great. Any board comments? Any public comments? Seeing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you. Do I have a motion to approve expenditures totaling $1,210,117.04 and payroll totaling $713,711.97, pension paid costs totaling $4,823.09 for July 2020?
So moved.
Second.
Any comments or questions? Public comments? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Great. Motion carries.
And Chair Nestor, some Mr. Miller brought to our attention as to this. I don't think we got to the approval of the minutes, and.
Yeah, we're, I, I'm aware.
You got it.
We're, we're, we'll get there.
Yeah.
Thank you, though. And then we do have some revisions here to the agenda as well. These are certificate of appropriateness. Do I have a motion to approve the certificate of appropriateness for the installation of a paver patio at 3024 Terra Court?
So moved. Second.
Charlie?
Okay, as soon as it comes up. I will start to talk now, though. This is a, a property you saw a month or so ago, at the time you granted a certificate of appropriateness to remove a deck and change some exterior doors to access a future patio. The deck is now off, and the patio is now been discussed by Harb at their meeting yesterday. This is the property on Terra Court. This is what was there, and what is going in its place, and a little bit larger is a paver patio shown here in yellow with a sitting wall and a fire pit. Harb saw no issue with it. It's behind the house. This is not a historic house, it was built in the 80s, but it's in the district, and Harb recommended granting the certificate.
Excellent. Thank you. Any board comments? Any public comments? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Great. Motion carries. Do I have a motion to approve the certificate of appropriateness for the replacing monument and building signs at 4060 Butler Pike?
So moved.
Second.
This is another nonhistoric building in a complex on the extreme northern end of our historic district. This is the building in the back of a three-building complex, the front building being historic, the two more contemporary office buildings not. The signage relates to the, the uses in the back building, which are all ophthalmology-related uses, some of which have changed over time, and hence the need for updated signs. The, this top sign is what's there now, this bottom sign is what is proposed out front along Butler Pike, and then there are changes to the building signs. This is, on the bottom is what's there now, and these signs are the ones that are proposed. Again, if you look at them closely, the names have changed slightly, the practices are a little different than were in the building before. Again, Harb reviewed this, had no issues with it, and recommend the issuance of a certificate.
Excellent. Thank you. Any board comments or questions? Any public comments? Seeing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Great. Motion carries. Do I have a motion to approve the certificate of appropriateness for deck and stair repair and adding a paver landing at 100 Black Walnut Lane?
So moved.
Second.
This is 100 Black, Black Walnut Lane is the corner of Black Walnut Lane and Spring Mill Road. This is the location of the property. This is a house that was built 20 years ago, but it's in the historic district as well. This is the house, and these pictures are a little bit hard to follow, but the proposal is extremely minor. It involves repairing the stairs and putting horizontal pieces for safety to meet code between the treads, and, I'm sorry, but the pictures go all which way. This shows the bottom of the staircase where it meets the ground. Right now, there's just a kind of a dirt area there. What they're proposing are pavers. These are the pavers that are being proposed, which match an existing paver patio elsewhere on the property. Again, this is behind the house. Harb saw no issue with it and recommended the issuance of a certificate.
Excellent. Thank you. Any board comments? Any public comments? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Great. Motion carries. Do I have a motion to approve the certificate of appropriateness for a retaining wall at 27 East Germantown Pike?
So moved.
Second.
This is actually an addendum to a certificate that you issued on May 11th. This is a historic building at 27 East Germantown Pike, which you've seen a number of times before. The one thing that was not looked at originally by Harb nor considered in your original certificate was a retaining wall at the side of the property bordering the parking lot. And that's about to be constructed, and we felt that it should come back, and we should amend the certificate of appropriateness. It's been on the plans all along, but we just never discussed it because there was so much attention being paid to the renovation to the building and the building addition that was proposed. So it's very simple. This shows you, this is the, the house and the addition that we have focused on in the past. This is the parking lot in the back, and what's highlighted in yellow is the retaining wall, which has been on the plan all along. It is a paver retaining wall. This is a picture of the materials. If you really want to see the real materials, they're back there in the meeting room. They were here for Harb, they're still here, and this is just a picture, not of the wall, but of an example of a wall built with these same pavers. The wall will vary from five feet at its highest to two feet at its lowest, to retain and maintain the drainage pattern on the site. And again, Harb had no issue with it and recommended that the certificate of appropriateness be amended.
Makes sense. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any board comments, questions, public comments? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Do I have a motion to authorize the order and settlement stipulation between 7025 Lafayette Avenue versus Monco Board of Assessment Appeals resulting in the decrease assessment in 2022, requiring a refund of $920.59 in township real estate taxes?
So moved.
Second.
Sure. Thank you very much, Chair Boilnester. As you know, in, in most real estate assessment matters, our school district takes the lead, because they have the biggest share of the, of the tax burden. They, in fact, filed an appeal a couple of years ago related to this property. There was an increase, but then there was a counter appeal from the. There was an increase, but then there was a counterappeal from the property owner, and it was settled. So the settlement that, settlement, the assessed value came down. So the township would actually owe a little over $920 for this. It is our recommendation, our office's recommendation, staff's recommendation, it's be approved. To us, to, to go further with this, we'd have to get our own appraiser, we would have to file our own litigation, and that would cost far more than $920.
That makes sense, too.
Yes.
Thank you. Any board comments, questions? Nope. All those in fa, or public comments? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Great. Motion carries. Do I have a motion to approve the minutes from July 14th, 2022?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. I'd like to open for public comments. Nope. Seeing none. Any board comments? Okay. I'd like to announce that we had executive session on, wait, I wrote it here, August 4th, and tonight, August 11th, where we talked about litigation and real estate. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor? Aye. Good night, White Marsh. Thank you.